We will open the council meeting. Let the roll call show. All councilors are present except for Jeff Gordon. Second item on the agenda is Agenda Review. Do we have anything to add? Nope. Moving on to Approval of Minutes of May 11th, 2014, 2015, and May 14th, 2015. Could I have a motion, please?
Move approval.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Does anyone have any changes or comments? All right, hearing none, I'll take a vote. All those in favor of approval of the minutes? Passed unanimously. Moving on to Public Hearings. Public Hearing A to discuss the 2015-2016 municipal and WPCF budgets. Leave that Sophie.
This is me. So, the staff has been working on the budget since the beginning of the year, so just going on a little over six months, actually. And we've been working with council over the last month and a half or so on the budget. So what we have for you tonight is just a very high-level overview of where we are with the budget process. The thought is we'll take public comment tonight and then gather again on the 22nd of June for council to actually act on the budget. So I think, you know, one of the more important elements for people to understand about the budget is that the municipal budget is a component, one of three components in the budget. This is what this slide shows. We actually will make up, as proposed, 36 percent of the tax rate this year. The RSU is 58 percent, and the county is 5 percent. So when you look at that, for every dollar that we collect, 36 cents actually stays in Orano. The rest, we, for Orano Municipal Services, the rest we send to the county and to the school system. So in comparing last year to this year, the proposed municipal budget is up a little over $60,000, which is actually significantly less than what was originally proposed. Council and staff did a really nice job finding alternative ways to fund this budget. The school assessment is, right now, up $185,000. The referendum election is tomorrow, so we, the citizens, have to approve that. And also, there was a decision made by the school board because the state budget has not yet been passed, and there are additional funds to local aid to education proposed in the state budget. The RSU 26 School Board voted to try to pass any savings that they get from increased subsidy on to the taxpayers. So that 185 is the highest number that we would see as an increase in the school. And the Penobscot County Tax, they actually went through their process last fall, and that $34,000 increase is mostly because Orano has grown at a quicker rate than other municipalities in the region, and we've had a few large decreases in value in Penobscot County. So it's increased Orano's share. Overall, the municipal budget as proposed is up 1.7 percent. The full budget, when you take into consideration all of the components, is up 2.82 percent, or $281,000. So within the municipal budget, there are five kind of segments, and I've tried to look at all of those in this presentation. We talk about General Fund. That is where the expenses from the General Fund are funded primarily through tax dollars, so property tax. Special Revenue Funds, or our reserves. We have some dedicated funds that we can pull in for the Special Revenue Funds. Tax Increment Financing Funds, there, the town has several Tax Increment Financing Districts, which are, bring in money that can only be used for approved economic development projects. Capital Improvement Budget, which would be the first year of our five-year capital improvement plan that council will adopt as part of the budget. And then Water Pollution Control Facility, which is an enterprise fund. So when we look at the General Fund Expenditure Summary, we're looking at an increase of about $405,000, or 5.45 percent. The operations is holding, is about $280,000 increase on the expense side, and it serves to try to keep services as steady as we can. Capital Reserve Budget, there's an asterisk there because that is the net impact of the capital and reserve budget on the tax rate. So later on in the presentation, we'll talk about the specifics of the capital improvement plan. Debt Obligation, we are holding pretty steady with that amount. Self-funded programs are primarily through parks, well, exclusively through Parks and Recreation, and these are the programs that we may have added over the last few years, but there is revenue to offset them. So you see an increase in the expense side, but you see a corresponding increase on the revenue side as well. So they net to zero. And then, we have historically had a $10,000 contingency. So our total expense budget is $7.8 million. So we offset that with a significant increase in our revenue budget. Most of that increase has come from General Fund revenue, and we have seen a lot of that coming from tracking trends. The Fire Department has been doing a great job with our emergency medical services, so we've been able to increase our projected revenue for them. We also have increased some fees, for example, up until now. If council adopts the fee schedule as proposed, we would be, up until now, you could park in a handicapped space in Orano at half the fine as you would if the state, if it was written as a violation of state law. So one of the things we're looking at is doubling that, and just that decision alone will bring in close to $11,000 a year in estimated revenue. The fund balance transfer, we have stayed right at $350,000 for the last couple of years. This extra $12,000 includes a redesign of the town's website, in an effort to be more responsive to the community needs and also provide back-office communication for staff. So this is where you see the net. So taking operations expenses and netting out the revenue, and you can see that at the end of the day, taxpayers, through their property tax, are paying for $3,751,957. And what I've tried to show in this slide is that it's $2.4 million for operation, $820,000 for capital investment and reserve, and then that $437,000 for debt obligation. So you see really big numbers on the expense side, but with that revenue, we're able to really decrease the impact on taxpayers. And that's where we came up with our $62,000 and 1.7 percent increase. So the budget document itself, operating document, is some 225 pages long, and the capital investment document is another 160 pages long. So I can't go through every single thing, but I wanted to hit the highlights. We are reorganizing staffing, which means in some cases, we've eliminated a position, and in other cases, we've added a position. It ends up being a half a full-time equivalent position funded by General Fund taxes. That is primarily a new IT GIS staffer. And then one full-time equivalent funded through Tax Increment Financing District Funds. That is a new full-time economic development individual. As we discussed with council during the pre-budget workshops, the, one of the issues we have is that we're not growing at a rate that can really sustain the level of services without continuing to increase the taxes. And so the hope is by bringing this economic development person onboard, we will be in a position to better support economic development, bringing tax base into the community, so that we will be able to better disperse the cost of services for all three of those components of the budget that we talked about at the beginning. The capital investment, a lot of it is just kind of the same thing that we always do. We buy equipment, we pave roads, we, in some cases, rebuild roads, and we take care of our facilities. I think the major highlight of this plan is the fact that council is really trying to put money behind this fiber infrastructure project, working with Orano Economic Development Corporation and Old Town Orano Fiber Corporation. So it primarily, it in general maintains the same service levels. Just one thing for people to be aware of is that there is a change in the way we will be responding to long-term winter weather response. We will be cutting, changing the way we respond to storms that are quite lengthy. There will be no more plowing for 24 hours or 48 hours straight. Council spent quite a bit of time talking with Public Works Director about that, and this budget reflects that change. So everybody wants to know about the projected tax rate, and I give the same caveat every year, which is that the budget makes up one portion of the calculation for the tax rate. Valuation makes up the other portion of that calculation. And so we have made our best conservative estimate on valuation. We hope that it will come in a little bit lower than 24.52, but that is, it's an estimate. We won't have the valuation until late July, likely. But based on our best estimate, and Rick usually does a very good job with that, we are predicting $24.52 per thousand dollars of taxable valuation. This shows how that's broken down, with 8.95 mils going to municipal services, 14.31 mils going for the school, and 1.26 mils going for the county. And then council always likes to know how we break those, that 67 cent increase up. And so it shows that it's 15 cents per thousand dollars of taxable valuation for municipal side, 44 cents for the school, and 8 cents for the county. So if the state budget passes, and there's all the extra money for the essential programs and services funding model for school, then we could potentially see that come down to 23 cents on the mil rate as opposed to 67. It all depends on what happens in Augusta. And I just keep telling myself I have no control over that. So there is the calculation, just to reiterate, that the tax rate is determined by the net municipal county and school budgets divided by the assessed non-tax increment financing district value. I think this is the slide that Judy likes, about, just to give people a kind of a flavor of what would happen with their tax bill, and break it down between the school, the county, and the town. So if somebody has a home with a taxable value of $200,000, they're looking at a projected increase in their taxes of $134 this year. Everybody seen enough?
Good.
Okay. So do you want to stop and take questions on each section, or wait till the end?
I don't think we wait till the end.
Okay. So, capital improvement. This budget is divided into four sections: capital equipment, capital infrastructure, facilities, and reserves. The expense budget is up approximately $250,000 over last year. Councilors and citizens might recall that this was part of a two-step plan to bring us up to a consistent draw on General Fund taxes. One of the things that you will notice as we go through here, that capital infrastructure is significantly up, and it is in large part because of a project planned out at Godfrey Drive, which is funded by Tax Increment Financing District Funds. So revenue is also up, as you see. So $820,000 to fund that $1.5 million will come out of General Fund taxes. $319,000 of it comes from reserves, which are monies that we have saved and, you know, put away to come back now. $295,000 are from Tax Increment Financing Districts, and we are projecting $80,500 for grants, the majority of that for fiber. So sometimes it's nice to look at kind of where we're spending the money on a net basis, meaning the expense minus the revenue. And it's, you can see, we continue to make a sizable investment in infrastructure. It's where the majority of our tax dollars are coming from. And the reserve, that's really driven in large part by trying to fully capitalize for future Fire Department trucks. We hadn't been doing that, so that's kind of a shift that we began about a year ago. That's how we come up with our $819,000 out of taxes. So when we talk about equipment, the plan is to make our payment on the fire engine, the new one that just came a couple of months ago. We've made one payment, and this budget is for payment number two out of five. The Fire Department pickup truck is in desperate need of replacement. The air bottles for the self-contained breathing apparatus need to be replaced. It's about a $10,000 expense. We are scheduled to purchase two cruisers this year, make investment into tasers and technology. A lot of that has been driven by some of the cases that we've seen coming down about, a lot of that technology is about recording, so the body cameras and also the tasers. And then Public Works is in desperate need of a front-end loader. Infrastructure. In the FY '15 budget, we started with design for Crosby Street drainage and reclaim. We want to continue that by actually completing the project this year. Hamlin Street is on the docket, has been, since I've been here, for street and sidewalks. General drainage improvements, a lot of those go right to our storm water system, because we are a regulated community. Godfrey Drive, I already spoke about the streetlights and the sign. And then Rob does a phenomenal job getting MDOT to spend money in Orano, and this year we are able to spend, have portions of Bennet and Kelly and Stillwater paved, with the town picking up a very small percentage of that project. Of course, we already talked about the Last Mile Fiber Project, which we want to continue, and then Middle Street Sidewalks are part of this budget as well. Facilities, we are planning a town office roof replacement, and also the replacement of the decking of the footbridge over by Birch Street School. There's some minor repair that has to be done underneath the decking, but we were very pleased with the report we got back from our study last year. We are, continue to put money away for the future. I think it's one of the things that allows us to maintain a steady draw on the taxes. And we're doing that with reserve appropriations for capital equipment, ambulance that we plan to buy next year, library for the building, and a major maintenance reserve for Public Works and, I'm sorry, for public safety and this building. So I wanted to make this as simple as I could. Every year when we establish a tax rate, we create revenue that comes into the town that is dedicated for specific use. That use has to be consistent with the development program that the Department of Community and Economic Development approved for the specific TIFs. This year, we're anticipating about $880,000 of revenue coming in. We expect we're going to spend about a little over $1 million that net retained in funds that we're going to drop the total fund balance by $121,000. And a lot of that is attributable to taking savings that we have had in the envisioned net TIF and using it on that Godfrey Drive electrical project. So in general, there are three generally accepted uses for TIF dollars. One is for economic development salaries and services, and so that pays for all of the new economic development person, their benefits, their wages. It pays for a portion of the town manager and the assistant town manager, as well as the planner this year, because a lot of his planning is economic development related with the comprehensive plan. We have a variety of projects, which I have another slide for, and then we have debt service, and that debt service is coming directly out of the downtown and transit-oriented TIF district, and it's to pay back the loan that we took to build the parking lot by the University Credit Union. And also, this year, we will, it was in the FY '15, but we're going to have to carry the money forward. We will be doing significant rehabilitation to the Pine Street parking lot. That's in design this year, and hopefully we'll start it in the spring. So that's where that money goes. So a lot of the TIF budget, our economic development budget, is created through conversations and, quite frankly, leveraging a lot of volunteer resources with the Orano Village Association and Orano Economic Development Corporation. And the council spent quite a bit of time going through their budgets, but what is amazing to me is what they're doing completely dovetails with where we are in the comprehensive plan. So it's working on food hubs and fiber and marketing and festivals and things that everybody agrees are part of our core economic development mission. They allow Orano to be bigger than our small staff would allow us to otherwise be able to get work accomplished. Marketing and promotion, that is, in general terms, one of our standard efforts out of the TIF districts. The Black Bear Express Shuttle, I'm not sure everybody realizes, but the downtown and transit-oriented TIF district pays our share of that. We have credit enhancement agreements that come out of TIF funds, and then the debt retirement for the parking lots. We do so much, it takes two pages. Infrastructure, we've really been able to maximize the use of Tax Increment Financing Funds to offset the costs of infrastructure projects that we otherwise would pay for out of the General Fund. If they can meet the TIF district rules, then we try to pay for them out of TIF funds. This year, we're looking at an engineering feasibility study for the fiber expansion, which will be our first major concrete step to expanding fiber in Orano. The Godfrey Drive electrical improvements and a new sign for the tech park. Rob has had significant issues trying to keep that sign up and going, so we're going to try to replace it. And Middle Street sidewalks. Special Revenue Funds. So this budget calls for, trying to find it, there we go, calls for us to appropriate, meaning from taxes or other sources, approximately $660,000 into Special Revenue Funds. The bulk of that, almost $500,000 of that, is around the OEDC, I keep calling it OEDC debt, it really isn't. It's town debt for the construction of Three Godfrey Drive, which OEDC was successful in selling the building, so we have all of the money sitting in reserve right now to repay that bond. We just can't pay the bond early. And then the usage of funds is what we pull out of the Special Revenue Funds, and the majority of that, again, it's OEDC, it's the bond repayment of $500,000. But we also have, we're pulling $267,000 out of capital reserve, equipment reserve. And when we built the new Public Works Garage, part of the plan with that is to use the Public Works Garage Reserve Fund to slowly phase in an increase on taxes that hopefully, well, not hopefully, we know, will get us to when we retire debt, so that we won't have to see a big spike in the mil rate. So this shows you that we are going to pay out approximately $328,000 more than we're bringing in, but, you know, $600,000 of that is usage as it's been designed for. It's designed to be used in that fashion. So there's the whole list. It's the bond repayment for Three Godfrey Drive, the Public Works Garage Reserve. We're in the final full year of the Employee Benefit Reserve, which we've used to phase in the hit that the budget took for employee retirement costs when our surplus, we ran out of the surplus with the main public employees' retirement system. The Safety Equipment Reserve Fund, we bring in $1,500 a year for that, and then Capital Equipment Reserve. All right, we're going to, want to break?
We can break here.
We can break here.
We'll give Sophie a little bit of a break and see if anyone has any comments or questions regarding the municipal budget before we go to WPCF. Any questions, comment? Well, that's all you get. Oops, Stu.
I'm sure you probably figured you'd see me here, I was going to say something. I know your job is very difficult in getting a budget. It's almost as difficult as coming up here and saying, "Whoa." Roughly, I guess, looking at past budgets and so forth, over the last four years, the tax rate has increased approximately 11%, I think, if my figures were right. And this was originally stated as 5%, and I guess it's not at 5 now. So anyway, that means over the last five years, we've had an increase of the tax rate of maybe around 15%. That's a lot of money, I think. So that concerns me. I did do a little research, I guess you'd call it. I got a list here that I'll hand out when I'm done, but there's 11 towns that I checked in this area, and the highest tax rate of any of those towns is Orono's. That means there's 11 towns, Bangor, Brewer, I even went as far as Farmington, Old Town, Hamden, they're all lower than Orono. Why, I don't know. It could be a way they assess the taxes, I don't know. But anyway, I've got a list for you to look at and laugh at. Now, I also went back on this last town report, 2013, I don't know if the 2014's out, but as of June 30, 2013, the town report showed $322,000 of outstanding tax liens. Now, most of those were paid after the books were closed. And however, one of these is the Orono Economic Development Corporation, which owed $103,000 in back taxes. I assume it's been paid, but I don't know. I don't know if they have an outstanding balance for the 2014 taxes. But I really don't know, I assume this is an Orono committee, and if they aren't paying their taxes on time, what do they expect the public to do? So that concerns me. I'm sure there's an answer that you people can give for it. Another large tax bill was the Penobscot Golf Holding, Penobscot Country Club. Now, a couple of years, a couple of months ago, or longer, one of their spokesmen said they don't pay their taxes for two years. They wait two years before they pay their taxes. It's probably legal, but I don't think it's being a responsible citizen. Now, I'm just wondering, and I'd like to get an answer from you people, what if all of the taxpayers in Orono didn't pay their taxes this year and waited two years before they'll pay them? What would the town do in that case if everybody in town got together and said, "We're going to wait two years and pay our taxes"? How will the town operate? Anybody got an answer on that?
As always, Stu, you come up with great points. The fact is that the town's hands are tied when it comes to the speed with which people pay their taxes. And you're right, we really rely on the 92% to 96% of our taxpayers that pay their taxes in a timely fashion. It's what allows us to operate throughout the year. If suddenly, there was no money, no cash flow coming in, we would have to go out and borrow money, which would only cost the taxpayers more. And I think council would be faced with either increasing our tax rate even more to be able to build up fund balance if it was becoming a historic issue, because that's how you operate when there's a cash flow issue, or significant cuts to services to reduce the cost of doing business. But you're right, we can't, we have people that we have to pay, we have equipment that has to be maintained, and things that need to happen that all take money, and we need people to pay their taxes on time.
And we have no way of forcing them, we can't make the penalty higher for them not paying?
No, the legislature is very clear in statute. They limit what the interest is on unpaid taxes. They have a very strict timeline. You have to let a tax bill be at least between eight months and 12 months after commitment before you can even lien it. Once you lien it, it has to sit for 18 months before it forecloses. So, you're very limited in how you can collect those taxes. And the issue is, there are some communities that have, instead of penalizing people who don't pay, they incentivize people to pay early. The problem with that is you have to increase your tax rate to bring in enough money to pay people to incentivize them. So you have to have a unique tax base in order to make that work.
Thank you. I just stay up nights thinking ideas of, heck, if the country club cannot pay their tax for two years, why not me wait and everybody else wait? But as you say, it could result in a longer, higher taxes.
Excuse me, Stuart, one second. There is a penalty.
Oh, yeah.
Associated with late payment of, right, so there is penalty.
Yes, that's a revenue that we use to offset the nets out the budget to reduce the taxes.
I assume the penalty isn't very stiff, however.
I think it's 7% per year.
Yeah, yeah. Tell the Internal Revenue you aren't going to pay your taxes and see what their penalty is. The, I appreciate the answer. I do, while I get the floor here, I'm just wondering if there's an answer regarding the Orono Economic Development Corporation, why they aren't paying their taxes, or why they didn't pay their taxes on time?
There is an answer. Shep, do you want to take it, or you want us to answer?
It's up to you, Shep.
Yeah, Shep Shepard, Orono Economic Development Corporation. Orono Economic Development Corporation took over ownership of the Microdyne Building back around 2000, and it was payment, and the rents from that facility were used to secure payments for the bond that the town borrowed to build the facility. Several years ago, we lost our tenant and were able to replace it with an outfit called Nextlens. Nextlens came in and was paying about half the rent that they were, that we had been receiving previously, and there were some difficulties. Part of the lease arrangement with them was they were to pay all the real estate taxes, which were not forthcoming. OECD is a volunteer organization, had essentially very little money to run this program with, and our obligation, if we, or, excuse me, our opportunity to collect that would have been to push Nextlens or to take the building back, but then the building goes dark and we lose the rent revenue in addition to the tax payments. So, we're walking a fine line and trying to make sure that the business stayed viable for them. And they employ, I think now it's around 500 people. So, we've tried to help our tenant in that instance, and earlier this year, we had an opportunity to sell the building, and we were able to do that, and now we have a much better situation. And as part of that sale, we were able to bring all our tax payments current, so it has been paid at this point, so.
I would just add that it's the additional money that came into the envisioned net TIF from the sale of that property that's allowing us to do the infrastructure improvements out of the tech park.
Just an offhanded remark, I'm wondering, did they pay the penalty?
Everybody does. And actually, Stuart, by state law, once that interest accrues, it becomes part of the tax, so we can't forgive the interest. The penalty is a permanent penalty that has to be paid.
Okay. Just a couple more quick statements. Also, according to the 2013 town report, it was around $46,000 of personal property taxes unpaid. Now, some of those were businesses that haven't paid them in five to 10 years. I don't know if those businesses still in operation or not, but if there's a company that hasn't paid their personal property tax for 10 years and they're still in business, I think there should be some way you can enforce that payment. I was in business, I paid my property taxes, and I paid them on time. And if this, if these companies are not in business now, then I think you ought to write the amount off as uncollectible. It's kind of foolish to list some of those for 10 years if they haven't paid their taxes. It makes people like me wonder. And just two other items that came up since this, on that TIF money, what I don't understand is you get X number of dollars coming in, but you plan to spend more than that. And, you know, I got money coming in from working, but I don't plan to spend more than that money that's coming in, so that's a concern.
So, let me just explain that every year, money comes into the TIF. And just like in your personal finances, when, if you're doing a good job, when your revenue or income is more than your expenses, you would put some in savings. We have TIF reserve accounts, where money that we don't spend in one year lapses into this TIF fund. That fund is still obligated to spend with all the same restrictions as if it had come in that year. But we have, we've had some bigger projects that we knew we wanted to fund, so that TIF balance has come up a bit, which has allowed us to do that. And you don't have to spend it all out in one year, you can collect it and hold it for projects, which is what we've done.
So it's got more money sitting there than its savings account is pretty good then?
Yes.
Okay. My last item, I heard you mention Pine Street Parking. Is that going to change back to where it was before they changed it to where it is? That's my last question. Thank you for your question.
Stuart, thank you for coming, and Rob Yerkes is going to get you an answer. Or at least a description of what's going to happen.
Yes, Rob Yerkes of Public Works. I can't answer that yet, because we are still working on designing what the best layout could be. And that's going to include a public meeting, where we're hoping that people will come and make comments like Stu's to help us make some of those decisions. But over the next six months, six to nine months, we'll be working on trying to figure out what the best layout down there is to meet the needs of the businesses and the rest of the community as well, so. Very early on, so we don't really have anything set in stone yet.
So, stay tuned. Hey, Susan, how, Stuart?
I'd like to just make a comment pertaining to the unpaid taxes. I mean, I myself am a person, I pay my taxes immediately, sometimes earlier than deadline. Though, I'd like to say that I think there definitely should be a leniency towards a person who is not in the position to pay their taxes, for whatever reason, simply because both individuals and businesses, sometimes unexpected losses occur, you know, such as, you know, the past year, mills that have closed, universities with budget cuts. A lot of people have lost their stability, their financial stability. And I'd rather a leniency, you know, as opposed to seeing my destitute on a month's notice, or to have properties, you know, I'd rather there be some leniency than a vacant property. I've read properties that, and excessive vacant properties can often be dangerous to have. So I think that's important to have.
Okay, thank you, Susan. Anyone else wish to comment? All right.
Pass down the material to Stuart.
Do you want to continue?
Yep, we will move on to pass this question.
All right. So looking at our water pollution control facility budget, I just would reiterate that this is a separate proprietary fund, so it's its own business. It operates off the revenue derived from user fees, operations, and grants. It's not subsidized by property tax. So, this year, Joe worked very hard sharpening his pencil and presented a budget that maintains the current level of services, that we continue to invest in capital expenditures and reserve appropriations, and it maintains the current user rates. So this year's operating budget is $1,502,500. I don't know what Joe did to actually get that to round out perfectly, it never happens. And then, when you add in the capital budget expense, it gives a total expense budget of $1.9 million. So our operating budget's actually up $30,000. And when we looked at that, it was primarily in the share, his budget's fairly small, so in the share of staffing with this new IT GIS individual. He also is assisting with a small percentage of the website redesign and the implementation of a new financial accounting system. Whoops, let me back up. Capital debt is down, and that is due in large part to the bond that we consolidated and refinanced last year. Joe was the one that saw the, or the WPCF was the one that saw the bulk of the benefit from that. And our capital budget is down $170,000. There's still some significant projects, which we will walk you through. So our capital projects this year is upgrade to the aeration spray header system, and the relining or repair in the collection system. Joe continues to focus very heavily on trying to keep the water infiltration out of the system, because if it gets into the pipes, it means it's going through our system and we're having to spend the money to treat it. But also, during really wet weather, during spring thaw and major rainstorms, those cracks in the pipe where water infiltrates can cause combined sewer overflows, which we really don't want, raw sewage going into the river. We've worked really hard and spent lots of money to reduce that risk, and we're just continuing on with that project. So we're really focusing this year along the University and Stillwater interceptors, relining a portion of Water Street. And Forest Avenue should be new to councilors, because Joe and I only talked about this a week and a half ago, because... uh, a week and a half ago, um, because, uh, when Bangor Gas went through Forest Avenue, they drilled their gas line through several of the sewer, um, services that came off our main. And so Bangor Gas had, um, Ted Berry come up and camera Forest Avenue. And since Joe has such a great relationship with, with Ted, he shared with us this video. Well, he shared that there was a problem and Joe went up and made this video. Joe, do you want to tell people what we're seeing, or?
Yeah, it's pretty plain to see, there's a, there's an area about seventy feet long that is, is, is like this, the pipes are cracked. Uh, some of the stuff that really makes me worried is when you see a piece sliding by the other one, then, then it's, uh, pretty close to failing. Uh, we didn't even know this was anything like this, it just happened to be, somebody looked, somebody was looking at it and saw it, and I saw, he called me right up and said, "You've got to come see this." And I was glad he did because this is, uh, I'm just afraid, I wouldn't even put my flusher in here, because I'm afraid of the damage I'd do, uh, to make it worse.
Joe, can you reline this?
Yes. We've got to, we've got to dig three spots in, in the, to repair it. Uh, you know, Belle cut this way down, you know, a couple of minutes, and she did a great job, but it's just, you're able to see the damage that is there now. Uh, when we get to the end of it, you'll, you'll see it even worse, but.
Joe, how much of this damage is done by Bangor Gas?
They, this is nothing. No, no.
We just, we learned about it because the Bangor Gas had a contractor up looking inside the lines.
Well, you know, we were already looking at Water Street, uh, because I happen to be TV in that one. And, I don't know, Kathy Connel, when she was a manager, said to put your, keep a cameo in the trailer, but, uh, just because you, this is what we're finding, you know, there's clay pipes all over town.
Just since the video's gone, can you just talk a little bit about the difference between the additional, um...
This is where the, this is where it really ends up, and one of the places that we'd have to dig up, uh, because the damage is so great, you can't line that. We've got a, there's a service there, and it's broken out.
Do you have to tell us exactly where it is, three hundred and thirty-one feet in?
Yeah, up the line, yep. I'm sorry.
Well, no, I was just suggesting that, um, you know, there's a difference between when we had to trench before, just in cost or in time.
Well, this, you know, the, uh, trenchless technology has come so far, uh, in the last twenty years, fifteen years even. I mean, the first one we ever did was down on, uh, uh, Mar, off Marden Street, between Marden Street and Union Street. Uh, we'd had In Sitifon down there years ago, and even, even then, there was a, there's a tremendous savings, uh, to not dig it up, and there's no disruption, there's no paving going back, uh, you know, so it's less than half ca, half the cost to line it. We, uh, and there's also pipe bursting that we're looking at for another project. Uh, so that's just some of the stuff that we're trying to do without digging up the roads. I mean, island avenues are, that's a, that's a mess. And, and an expensive mess to build.
So that is our colorful way of showing you, illustrative way of, of letting you know that we've added that into the WPCF budget. We haven't had, um, a chance to get formal quotes, but, um, based on Joe's expertise, we're guestimating approximately forty-five thousand dollars with contingency to reline and dig up those two areas. Um, we'll bring that back too when we know for sure, but that is part of his budget. And, um, this last slide shows that, um, since two thousand and ten, we have not increased the sewer rates. And that, before I open it up once again for questions, I, I, you know, I can't say enough about staff. They allow us to operate and do pretty amazing things with very, very small staff. They work so hard to create a transparent and, um, transparent budget that was really based on, um, quantifiable, um, you know, rationale, and they did a phenomenal job, made my job much easier. So, thank you.
Anyone have any questions or comments on the WPCF budget? Joe? All right, I am going to close public hearing A, and move on to public hearing B, to accept comments on proposed FY two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen fee schedule.
So the, the fee schedule is several pages long, and so I just want to hit the highlights. Um, this was talked about with council. Um, the original budget, oh, this, it calls for increases to the contract zone, um, application process, and those are, um, the direct result of additional costs for us to, um, administer that process. Um, the fire department has, um, increased, um, a couple of their fees. Air bottle fills went up a dollar a bottle. Um, the hazmat team went from fifteen hundred dollars an hour to twenty-two hundred dollars an hour out of town. Um, and that is reflective of what other regional hazmat teams are charging. We, um, took out the EMS billing, um, rates that were in there because we bill based on state of Maine, um, standard rates. And, um, so we, we were seeing conflict between the two, and we wanted to make sure that we billed in accordance with what the state expected, and, um, also didn't leave any money on the table if we, if we, uh, could help it. Um, the, um, EMS, um, lift assist, if there's not a transport, allows, um, the chief in this, um, fee schedule to charge a hundred dollars per lift. And, um, we also, the jaws of life, if we bill that through to an insurance company, we increase that from six hundred to seven hundred dollars, um, to reflect what seems to be industry standard. The library wants to introduce, uh, a new corporate card, which I think the council thought was a pretty cool idea. Um, uh, for ten dollars a year, if you're a UM business or, um, employee or University of Maine student, you can, you could buy a card, um, to, uh, hopefully get you into the library to enjoy those services. Um, police would like to restructure their fees in terms of accident reports to just charge a flat fifteen dollars per report, as opposed to ten dollars for the first page and three dollars for, um, sorry, ten dollars for the first three pages, and then three dollars a page after that. Um, I'd just highlight that, based on council discussion last year, the fee schedule includes an increase in overnight municipal parking, um, to forty dollars a month or three hundred dol, three hundred and fifty dollars per fiscal year. I already mentioned handicap parking. Um, recreation, there aren't a lot of changes to those fees. Um, we've included some new programs like swim team. Um, we have increased the fee for swim lessons, um, which was one of the places that we didn't increase last year because we had some comments and concerns about quality. This year, we've really worked to address that, so we've brought the fee up, um, five dollars. Um, I think another major piece in the fee schedule is, um, the piece where council acknowledges that, um, our rec programs change and the pricing changes based on the needs, and, um, therefore they've kind of, this would give the town manager some discretion in establishing fees for new programs. That, and then in the land use, there are some fee increases for site plan review, subdivision, major subdivision review, and they're all based on, um, the cost of notifying people with postage and also in the, um, the newspaper. So it's based on our cost for that.
Does anyone have any questions or comments on the fee schedule?
Can I have a question? So, so, um, in the past, the municipal parking permit, we put a note in, and my understanding is that the rental unit registration fee in the future also will see some changes, right? So do, do we want to acknowledge that officially so that, because it was nice, our intention in the past was to let people know what's coming so they could, right, plan for it? And I know from my conversation with you, you were, your thoughts were the same, we don't want to be unfair, people have rental, uh, right, that have been done already, but the fee structure will potentially change, that there's intention to change it, so to just announce that in the fee schedule?
I think that's a, a great idea. I think we should also set perhaps like January first as the date that we would try to do, but, yeah, we could announce that intention. And also with the, uh, rental registration renewals that are going, letters that are going out in the next couple of weeks, those, I will also announce the intention in that so that we won't caught, catch people unaware.
All right, I'm going to close public hearing B, and move on to public hearing C, to review the Orno Village Center District Development Program.
Sure. It's okay. Um, my name is Deb White, right out, and I was voted in president of the Orno Village Association last fall, late last fall, and I wanted to thank you for allowing me to present the association's annual plan and what our focused efforts will be for two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and sixteen. I did provide Nancy the plan, hopefully you all have had an opportunity to read through it, and be happy to answer any questions. But I did want to first really restate the purpose of the association, um, in keeping that in mind, and also focusing on some of the things that through multiple merchant association meetings that I've attended and board meetings, what our focuses will be for two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and sixteen. So our purpose, um, a while back, when we, the organization was created, was to assist and continue creating and maintaining a vibrant downtown, um, area that will enhance the quality of life for residents, merchants, and visitors, and hopefully increase, um, the, the visitor traffic certainly. Um, and how we would do that is through, one, the coordination of cultural and commercial events, the historic preservation and aesthetic improvement of the downtown area, the encouragement of involvement and participation by the University of Maine and the activities of the association and in fairs of the district, as well as the lessening of the burdens of local government, including the improvement of access to downtown and the availability of parking, attraction to new businesses coming into town, and improvement of the business environment for the good of the community. So, I have had several meetings with merchants who attend our merchant association meetings every month, um, prior to our board meetings, and I'd be happy to say that there's an increase in participation over time, which is good. Um, I'm excited about that, um, and have a lot of great new ideas, but I know we've done some great things in the past, so we do want to continue focusing our efforts through funding and supporting of a lot of events that happen in the community, such as the Winter Festival. We had a spectacular Winter Festival this past winter, um, some great feedback from the local community. We also want to continue support of the Summer Concert Series. We have some exciting, um, events coming up. We've expanded our concert series in terms of how often we do it through the summer, which will help. And also the Summer Fall Village Festival, in collaboration especially this year with the University of Maine, seeing that it is a hundred and fiftieth celebration for them. So we're looking forward to some exciting events that we could, um, partner with and bring folks into the community. Some of the focuses for two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and sixteen directly, um, as you have in front of you, um, pursuing additional marketing opportunities with the town of Orno and the University of Maine to encourage people to visit downtown and enjoy the amenities that are available. Multiple restaurants here in this community garner excitement, increase participation at current events, provide volunteer support, and funding assistance for no, those new events. And I know that some of the newer events that are coming, um, this year, and hopefully will continue, uh, for years in the future, is some of the marathons that are happening this summer, which are very excited, canoe races that are newly blossoming in our community as well. Our second area would be to pursue new opportunities to assist in improving the appearance and attractiveness of the village, um, joining efforts with several, um, community organizations. One example would be the Orno Beautification Committee and working with them. Um, we did and are going to pursue, um, possibly purchasing some new black iron rod benches and replace the current benches across town that you see, the cement old drab park benches out there. May now look like, um, uh, you know, the consistency of the black iron rod that you see in the trashcans out there right now. Um, and, um, hopefully we'll, um, add a few locations. We have some harsh winters where some of them have seen a lot of damage to them, in fact, there's a few that are gone. Um, so, um, we'll replace those hopefully with some, a new look. Number three, updating the Orno map with new businesses that have entered our community. Um, so, update, reprint, and redistribute. Continue working with local committees, supporting the progress of the beautification of the town's bus shelter project. Um, that's one that, um, we've heard about, and we want to continue to pursue how we can help support that, um, through funding position. And then lastly, continue to identify opportunities to improve parking for visitors to downtown businesses as well, as several merchants have requested that. We keep that as a focus for two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and sixteen. And that's our current plan. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions or take any comments.
Thank you very much.
Actually, I'm wondering, the benches that you mentioned, were those of steel construction? Is that what you're saying?
Mm-hmm. They would be similar to the ones that are currently in the, the new parking law behind the university credit union.
I haven't seen those yet.
They're, um...
Are they mostly steel?
Yes, and they're heavy, and they would be, um, fastened to, yeah, to the ground.
Are they steel and wood or just steel?
Just steel.
Yeah, just, the only concern, just to, to mention, you know, is just maintenance. You know, in terms of, I've seen a lot of steelwork throughout the Bangor Metropolitan vicinity, uh, some of the private properties along Main Street, as well as, uh, the steelwork on the Bangor Public High School, hasn't been maintained. No one's taking care of it, it's just getting left to rust, um, which can be potentially dangerous and looks terrible.
Right.
So that's something to consider, if you want to bring more of those in, um, I'd consider just the, the maintenance.
Sure.
You know, or, or just the, uh, the pro, the process of finishing on those.
I appreciate that feedback, and we'll bring it back to the board when we get down to really identifying some potential options. I brought forth some, um, options that are very similar to the ones that we cur- very similar to the ones that we currently have, um, in that, the town parking lot. They're, um, eight foot, heavy, heavier than your regular wrought iron park bench, sturdy. But I will bring that, your feedback, back and, and make sure that we discuss that. Thank you.
I mean, metals is actually my field of study. Um, benches that work really well, uh, similar to what can be found in Boston, as well as New York, or the, uh, not sure if they're necessarily steel. They might be more of like a bronze alloy or some such, but the metal and wood compositions, I think those probably easier maintenance. Um, and, you know, that design, those designs would also kind of tie in the east coast, the northeast urban aesthetic, you know, might make connections. So something to consider. As much as I like steel construction, that's why I dedicated many, many years to pursuing that field and left the state of Maine to pursue that.
Maybe you can have a conversation with Deb, but thank you for your input. Um, anyone else have any comments or questions for Deb? Hearing none. I will close public hearing C, move on to public hearing D, implementation assessments to be assessed against real and personal property for the municipal development district located in the downtown area known as the Village Center Tax District.
So, um, each year, um, the council holds this public hearing to, um, allow for comment regarding the additional tax that is levied against those who live in the Village, um, Center Tax District. I, um, have, um, through OVA, um, asked the question if anybody wanted to, um, not have this tax levied, because this is a tax that is an extra 50 cents per thousand assessed to the people who live within the vi- Village Center Tax District. The town collects it, and then it's given back to, to OVA for the purposes of the work plan that you just, um, heard about. Um, and it was a resounding, um, resounding support to continue this. In fact, our question was, we're implementing a new software system that doesn't know how to do this, so before we go and make them redesign this element of the software system, we want to make sure that you're okay with this, and they did not want to see us, um, take that, the, um, additional tax away.
Any public comment? All right, I will close public hearing D, move on to public hearing E, but before I do that, I'd like to thank Sophie for the detailed and descriptive presentation. Um, so, public hearing E is to consider a Class 1 malt, spirituous, and vinous liquor license special amusement permit for music, dancing, and entertainment, and vitriloquist license for the Bear's Den Memorial Union, University of Maine. I think Bill's on vacation.
So I can tell you that all inspections were completed and, um, taxes and sewer have been paid. Staff recommends approval of the licenses.
Anyone wish to comment on the issuing of these licenses? All right, having none, close public hearing E and move on to Order 1585, order approving a Class 1 malt, spirituous, and vinous liquor license for the Bear's Den Memorial Union, University of Maine. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any comments? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Um, Order 1586, order approving a special amusement permit for music, dancing, and entertainment for the Bear's Den Memorial Union, University of Maine. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Order 1587, order approving a vitriloquist license for the Bear's Den Memorial Union, University of Maine. Motion, please?
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion? No. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Moving on to public hearing F, to consider a Class 1 malt, spirituous, and vinous liquor license special amusement permit for music, dancing, and entertainment, and vitriloquist license for Wells Commons, University of Maine.
Again, all inspections were completed. The, um, sewers and any sewer taxes have been paid, and staff recommends approval of the licenses.
Any public comment? Close public hearing F, move on to Order 1588, order approving a Class 1 malt, spirituous, and vinous liquor license for the Wells Commons, University of Maine. A motion, please? So moved.
Second.
All right, any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor? Passes unanimously. Order 1589, order approving a special amusement permit for music, dancing, and entertainment for Wells Commons, University of Maine. A motion, please?
Move approval?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Order 1590, order approving a vitriloquist license for Wells Commons, University of Maine. Motion, please?
Move approval?
Second. Any comments? All those in favor?
Yeah, Paul Ferguson.
Yeah, I'll work with him to, if you pass it, I'll get that piece so it's accurate. And, um... Yep, and I will, um, just flood it three years into the track.
Yeah, the way the question reads, it's a little bit, sounds like it's for the prior five years. I was a little confused.
Yeah, and it's, I don't know if it's...
Okay, um, so I'm on Order 1590. I just need a vote.
1590.
1590. All those in favor? Great, passes unanimously. Um, public hearing G, to consider vitriloquist licenses for American Legion, Big Apple, Burger King, Dice Arts Travel Stop, the amp, the store Ampersand, Thai Kitchen, and Wendy's.
So all of the inspections in all of these places were completed by code and life safety, and the sewer and taxes have been paid. Staff recommends approval of the licenses.
Any comments, public comments? Having none, there's the public hearing. Move on to Order 1591, order approving a vitriloquist license for the American Legion. A motion, please?
Move approval?
Second. All right, any discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Order 1592, order approving a vitriloquist license for Big Apple. Motion, please?
So move.
You got it.
I'll second it.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Order 1593, order approving a vitriloquist license for Burger King. Motion? Move approval? Second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Order 1594, order approving a vitriloquist license for Dice Arts Travel Stop. Motion, please?
Move approval?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor? Passes unanimously. Order 1595, order approving a vitriloquist license for the store Ampersand.
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Order 1596, order approving a vitriloquist license for Thai Kitchen. Motion, please?
Move approval?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Order 1597, order approving a vitriloquist license for Wendy's. Motion, please?
Approval?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? I think we've had, hit a large geographical area of vitriloquist license. We will move on to acknowledgements by council members. Mark, do you have anything?
Well, I do want to thank staff and Sophie for all the effort in the budget process. There's been an amazing amount of time, I think, a lot of responsibility, a lot of thoughtfulness in trying to figure out the services that we're trying to provide and how to do it really efficiently and at high quality. So thank, thanks staff and Sophie.
Hear, hear.
I would, I would second that very much. It was very impressive.
Tom?
Well, I want to third it. But I'd also like to, to thank my fellow council members who I think worked really hard during this budget process. Um, I, I really appreciate the information that, um, Stuart Dexter brought to us during our public hearing, and I think we all share his concern about the tax rate in Orno and how it compares to our neighboring communities. And I know that was in the forefront of our minds as we were going through the budget, making adjustments, and recommending some changes, and, um, I think we need to continue to do that. Shifting gears a little bit, I would also like to acknowledge the Orno High School track teams, who both the bur, the girls and the boys' track teams won state championships Saturday. Um, congratulations to Chris Libby, the head coach, and his assistants, and the participants. Uh, for the girls, it was their fourth state championship in a row, which is a pretty outstanding achievement.
All right, Tom Spitz.
I would just, uh, rather echo everybody else because I'm about to sneeze again. Thank you.
Judy, before you sneeze?
Uh, other than, again, commending the staff and, and Sophie and everybody for the hard work that went into those budgets, and, and we really do appreciate the effort. Where we started was not as, as palatable as where we ended up, you know, and, and one of the things, I think, if you look at the budget too, and you look at some of the costs, I mean, so many things are really not in our control. If you look at the huge increases in, you know, insurance costs and medic, you know, medical costs particularly, and that type of stuff. So I, I mean, it really is, was quite a feat to do what, what, what we finally ended up with.
I would agree with everyone on the budget process, and I'd like to just congratulate the Orno High School graduates next week or week after, next week, I think. Um, and I also wanted to just commend Parks and Rec. Um, two guys just came in four months ago, and it is really exciting programs that we're, we're seeing, and I wish them the best of luck with all of that. All right, move on to unfinished business. Don't believe we have any. And now the consent agenda. Um, I will take a motion to move the consent agenda.
Move approval of the consent agenda?
Second. All right, um, any discussion or comments? All right, take a vote on the consent agenda. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. One thing I also did forget is tomorrow is the votes on school budget, so hopefully everybody will come and vote. Right here, starting at 7:00 AM. 8:00 PM. And order, now, it's okay, now we're moving on to Order 15108, order authorizing the town manager to execute a contract. No, is that, no? I'm sorry. I saw you come wrong in the office. New business, here we go. Order 15106, order authorizing the town manager to negotiate and sign a contract with medical reimbursement services for EMS billing services. Um, I'll take a motion, please?
Move approval?
Second.
All right, Rob?
Rob St. Louis, fire chief. Um, currently the fire department has been using Bangor Fire for our EMS billing services. Um, we spoke to our auditor and other towns in the area, um, and looked for other options. Um, one option that came across was, uh, medical reimbursement services out of Wyndham, Maine. Um, they, um, they collect between 63% to 80% of, um, all funds that are bailed out. Um, it's a 6%, um, they receive 6% for, uh, pay for the collections. Um, what they offer a little different than Bangor does is, uh, Bangor has two, uh, workers that do the EMS billing for eight other departments, but they also take care of the administrative assistant duties for the, for the town, uh, for the fire department. So they have a lot more going on. Um, the medical reimbursement, they, um, they take care of just medical billing only. Um, and, um, so they can concentrate on, um, what they collect, and they, what, they only get paid by how much they collect. So that's how they figured out with Bangor, we, we were paying per call. Um, they also are up on more technology and procedures and EMS billing, so they do what they call bundle billing, which all insurance company will bill the same amount, so they collect more that way. Um, so, um, we would like to go to the medical reimbursement. Uh, we're looking at probably, uh, between 10, 15% increase in revenue for our EMS services. Um, and it also helps us with our HIPAA policy because they take care of all the, um, electronic run reporting, and they also review all our electronic run reporting that our paramedics do to make sure we're, makes, uh, checking all the boxes and, uh, following out the HIPAA procedures.
Just to add, um, in the council committee, we discussed this, and Rob went back. We, the contract draft that you have now is a one-year draft, and they've addressed the insurance and performance bonding that we had questions about.
That was a great job. Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
This just seems like an excellent move for us and, uh, more revenue and much more efficient.
All right, I will take a vote on Order 15106. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Moving on to Order 15107, order authorizing the town manager to sign an agreement to extend refuse and recycling collection services with Pine Tree Waste Services, Inc. I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Go ahead, Rob.
Uh, hello, Rob Yerksa, Public Works. Um, so our current, uh, collection contract for, weekly collection of trash and every other week collection of recycling is due for, um, is due to be either re-upped or discontinued, um, on June 30th. Um, the current contract with Casella allows for a single year, um, one more single year extension. Um, so in starting to negotiate with, uh, Casella for that final year, um, it was clear that market changes and, um, other factors associated with the change in solid waste in the region in 2018, um, it was in the best interest of the town to, um, negotiate a three-year extension with Casella, uh, for these services. Um, and so working with, um, Jim Dunning at Pine Tree Waste, uh, we were able to settle on, um, a three-year extension that, um, covered fiscal years 16, 7, and 18, um, with increases of 4%, 5%, and 5%, 5% respectively. The bottom line, I think, for me is that, um, they've delivered an excellent service to the community over the years that we've had them, um, and significantly, at significantly lower price than their competitors. Um, just to put that in perspective, uh, when we bid this contract in 2011, there was some $30,000 lower than their next, um, competitor, and even with the increases over the next three years, um, in 2018, they'll still be $16,000 less than the closest bidder four years ago. So, um, not only do they provide a good service, but it also makes sense financially to continue with them. So for those reasons, we're recommending the three-year extension.
Questions?
Rob, those increases of 4% and 5%, are those pretty much what we've been experiencing over time, or is this just?
No, um, the, the original bid... No, um, the, the original bid called for increases, um, tied to the CPI, (laugh) um, which range generally is about two percent. Just a little bit more of an increase than we have been paying. But keep in mind, um, we just discussed in committee, the, uh, particularly with the recycling collection, um, that market has changed pretty significantly. And if we were to go out to, um, bid that contract, we'd probably end up with some kind of tipping fee structure that could cause us, cost us far more than the four and five percent they're asking for.
So, there had been discussion about pay to throw? Right, there has been discussion, recent discussion about pay to throw?
Yep, we just said we were going to work on that in the fall and get community and...
And so how does this impact that?
There would be no impact. And if, talking with Casella, if we chose to go in that direction, they would hold these prices for both the recycling and the weekly collection.
Anyone else? All right, thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
I will take a vote on order fifteen one oh seven. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Moving on to fifteen one oh eight. Here I tried to start at the beginning. Order authorize the town manager to execute a contract to Sunset Development, Inc. for manhole adjustments related to MDOT paving project along Main Street and College Avenue. Funds authorized with order fifteen dash thirty-four. Motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Joe Madigan, Waste Water Superintendent. As council recalls, we had a proposal, or we had a, an order came to council to authorize the town manager to, uh, have a contract with Maine DOT. But when Maine DOT went out for bids for their manhole repair work, they came in way too high. So, we went back and, and we got separate bids from a couple more contractors and Sunset Development's coming in at about where we expected them to come in, where we expected the contract to come in before. So we've got forty manholes to do, forty, forty-one, and, uh, we'd like to have Sunset Development do it for us. We can't, WPCF staff can't do, can't commit to that kind of, kind of work, that's just too much. That's right.
What, what was the difference about from what the DOT was?
Yeah, the DOT was thirteen hundred and their Sunset Development's five fifty.
Plus some of our equipment, so we're figuring it, an average of about seven hundred fifty to eight hundred dollars a manhole.
It brings us to about the eight hundred dollars that we anticipated it to be, where we supply some of the materials.
Will they be able to?
That's good work, too.
Will they be able to meet the?
Oh yeah, the timeline, yeah. Yep.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Right, thanks, Joe. I will take a vote on order fifteen one oh eight. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Moving on to future agenda items and items of concern. Judy? Tom Spitz? Tom Perry?
Nope.
Sam?
No.
Mark?
Not to be consistent, so, uh, some of you might realize that there's been some concern about the water quality of, uh, water in Town of Orno. And, um, there's been a study that's gone on at the, actually multiple studies at the university and Amanda Olson is engaging in a multiple-phase study and I think I forwarded the report, but she would be, uh, happy to come and do a presentation at a council meeting if council was interested. And she could also, um, inform us about the future plans. They've got some grants to continue to look at water quality issues in the town. So if we would like to see a presentation, we should, uh, inform her or I can inform her.
Is she around this summer?
I think so.
She did presentations last summer.
Can I just clarify? Mark, when you say council meeting, do you mean the formal meeting or do you mean a, like a committee?
I would think probably at this meeting would be better so that the public could see the results of the work that's being done and, and I think there's a lot of, actually good numbers, from what I've seen.
Here's the top. Moving on to public petitions? I had, um, no public petitions, public comments?
I've got one comment and two announcements. Uh, wanted to mention that the new Publix work, Public Works building on Kelly Road, that, that is looking pretty darn good. And, uh, and the resurfacing that's been done has been phenomenal. I'm kind of inclined to think that, uh, some of the motors are going to save some fuel costs from that resurfacing. As well as, uh, mechanical repair, alignment services. And, so my two announcements is I, I attended, uh, this past weekend's Special Olympics and I did my annual, uh, recording of some of the events, I recorded some of the races. And, uh, one of my favorites is interviewing the medalists afterwards. And that's been posted on, on YouTube under Orno Special Olympics two thousand fifteen. So if you didn't attend, you can get a glimpse of what's occurring. It, um, and my, my second announcement is a little bit of quote, shameless self-promotion, but not only myself, others as well. And also this past weekend, on Friday, I had my first, um, opening reception for exhibition in a little more than a decade. I kept, when I was located in Boston, I was exhibiting sculptures and stuff that I'd made at least twice a year, along with commission works. And, uh, this year I participated in an exhibition at One Loop Vine, which is fiber supply. The owner is also a resident of Orno. And One Loop Vine is located in Bangor and there's currently an exhibition, I think there are approximately thirty exhibitors in the show. Uh, One Loop Vine just expanded and renovated their, their place, so there is a juried exhibition, about thirty exhibitors and, uh, will be exhibit, will be open, I think it's until July.
Congratulations. All right, oh, Stuart has a comment?
Want to keep your ear holes up longer?
It's okay. We thank you for putting up with the static in your headphones.
Oh, that's okay. I got three items. One, um, uh, on our tax rate going up, uh, going to some of these meetings that the, the comprehensive committee had, a lot of the, uh, people said, uh, they want Orno to get more younger people in town with families and so forth. I'm wondering if the high tax rate is the reason we have so many houses for sale in Orno. There's a bunch of them and I'm surprised every day there's a new one that goes up. I did notice two came down the other day, but anyway. That, I'm wondering, uh, you might put in your mind, uh, on the tax rate and it looks like the school committee is one of the ones that's boosting our taxes up and I don't go to those meetings anymore. Uh, another thing that came to me, hearing all the licenses, uh, uh, that were approved tonight, one of the things that was stated that they had paid their taxes. Now I'm wondering, when the country club comes in, I assume they asked for these licenses and if they haven't paid their taxes, do we hold those licenses up? So they must be paying them.
The only license that we can condition, Stuart, is the vitueller's license. So if they don't engage in activities that require a vitueller's license, which they have done before, um, they can continue without having to get the license, so...
What's that license for? I, I'm kind of stupid.
For selling prepared, um, food that they prepare. So, um, they've done that and in the four years I've been here, I think every year they do come up, we condition the license on getting their, not only their property tax, but their personal property tax as well.
It seems to me that maybe if they aren't going to pay them, there's a little pressure you can put somewhere else on them. Anyway, you might also say, I don't think they're very good responsible citizens, but... Now, the, the last item I've got, I think it was last year they said, somebody said that they were going to repave Route Two from VZ to Orno. And I thought that was going to be starting last year and it didn't. Uh, what's, what's going to happen so I know which way to go to Bangor?
So, that work is going to actually be starting over the next month, like now, like tomorrow.
Oh, so I won't go to Bangor tomorrow?
Yeah, yeah, that's, um, Joe's lifting of the manhole project is they're going to come through and put a course down and Joe's going to adjust the manholes for them to come and do the final paving.
Have them adjusting properly so that we don't have a problem like wherever we're having a problem.
Absolutely.
Okay.
You can go home, huh?
Actually, we have executive session, but thank you for... All right, um, I will take a motion to go into executive session. In accordance with MSRS Title One, Chapter Thirteen, Section four oh five, six A, Town Manager's Annual Performance Review.
So moved.
Second, please? Second. All right, all those in favor? Great, we are now in executive session. Thank you.